Good evening, Chair. Calls to order board of health update. Council, this evening we have Ms. Austin, our health officer here this evening with many members of the Health Department. Ms. Austin, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Travel in groups. So, good evening, Councilman. County Council President Vincenti and members of the council. On the agenda tonight, we're going to talk about the Health Department and share our mission, vision, and value statement. We're going to talk about the 2024 Community Health Needs Assessment, Recovery Month, Infant Safe Sleep Awareness Month, and I'm going to give you some program updates. So, these are Hartford County Health Department's mission, vision, and value statements. Our mission is to protect, promote, and improve the health, safety, and environment of Hartford County residents. Our vision is to make Hartford County the healthiest community in Maryland, and our values are teamwork, leadership, collaboration, integrity, commitment, and cultural sensitivity. I share these for a reason. Health Department staff work tirelessly to uphold these standards. It may appear sometimes that we make things difficult with all the state rules and regulations, but in the spirit of public health and for the safety of our community, we don't mind being called rigid and unbending. However, I believe over time, when questioned specifically about our environmental health programs, we have been able to successfully communicate our reasoning with the county council, and particularly Mr. Vincenti, and the council is always willing to hear us out and meet us as needed. So, I thank you all for that. The Hartford County Community Health Needs Assessment provides a thorough evaluation of the health status of Hartford County. The report includes both primary and secondary data in qualitative and quantitative forms. Primary data is collected through an online survey that is distributed to residents throughout the county and asks questions regarding their health status, risk factors, and health outcomes. Primary data is also collected through focus groups with key informants in the community and residents in the county. Focus groups provide a diverse perspective on the health of the county and help determine health priorities. Secondary data is collected through a compilation of data from several sources. This important document is produced by an amazing partnership with the Health Department, including our very own Rania Nasar, Zil Rival, and Zach Makis, the University of Maryland Upper Chesapeake, including Vicki Bands, and Kim Tice, and Healthy Hartford, and the report can be found on our website. September was Recovery Month. Recovery Month celebrates the gains made by those in recovery, just as we celebrate improvements made by those who are managing other health conditions such as hypertension, diabetes, asthma, and heart disease. We are fortunate to have staff who have maintained their recovery for many years now, and they are assisting others in the community to do the same. The governor of Maryland proclaimed October 2024 as Infant Safe Sleep Awareness Month. In Maryland, an average of 46 infants died of sleep-related deaths annually between 2018 and 2022. Seventy-eight percent of infant sleep-related deaths from 2012 to 2022 in Maryland were deemed preventable. The Health Department's Safe Sleep Program provides extensive education and presentations regarding safe sleep practices to families in our community at places such as Megan's Place, Judy Centers, and other sites upon request. In addition, our program provides sleep sacks to families. So, what does a safe sleep environment look like? Babies should have their own sleep space in your room, separate from your bed. Use a firm, flat, and level sleep surface covered only by a fitted sheet. Remove everything from baby's sleep area except a fitted sheet to cover the mattress. No objects, toys, or other items. Use a wearable blanket to keep baby warm without blankets in the sleep area. Make sure baby's head and face stay uncovered during sleep. Place babies on their backs to sleep for naps and at night. Couches and armchairs are not safe for baby to sleep on alone with people or with pets. And keep baby's surroundings smoke-free and vape-free. And now, I want to give you a couple of program updates. Here's a snapshot of our services. Of note on this slide, which reflects FY24 services, is the high volume of clients we have coming through the Health Department. And this isn't all of our services, just some highlights. Some that are worth mentioning, we issued 9,880 birth certificates. We had 30,073 medical assistant transport rides to medical, mental health, and dental appointments. We had a total of 15,734 clients served in our Behavioral Health Bureau. Our care coordination team navigated 685 clients through the healthcare system. There were 2,067 women's wellness visits. For environmental health, there were 1,147 food inspections, 800 animal bite investigations, and 1,403 building permit reviews. And for family health, there were 6,938 dental visits and 4,166 WIC clients seen. Sorry about that. So, on November 22nd, we will be holding -- oh, Hispanic Heritage Month, sorry. The Health Department held its second annual Hispanic Heritage Month event on September 28th at our Woodbridge location in Edgewood. The event offered free live music, kids' activities, health resources, flu shots courtesy of Upper Chesapeake, STI screenings, clothing donations, giveaways, Italian ice, and snacks. We are grateful for the 12 community partners and our own staff who planned, attended, and provided information to over 50 attendees. On November 22nd, we will be holding our 2024 Youth Symposium for middle and high school girls. These events have been hugely successful. It will be held again at the Ward Y in Abingdon. All Hartford County middle and high school girls are invited. There will be resources, giveaways, words of encouragement, music, food, games, affirmation boards, and more. This is put on by our amazing minority health team led by Felicia Hopkins. We have a new program coming soon called Civil Surgeon. Applying for a green card or adjustment of status in the United States requires undergoing an immigration medical examination. The examination must be done by a doctor who is designated by U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services. A physician must apply to the USCIS for approval to become a civil surgeon, and once approved, they can perform the immigration medical examination required for most green card applicants. We are excited to announce that a local physician who attends our Chronic Disease Local Health Improvement Coalition group, Dr. Frank Sparandero, will be leading this project at our Woodbridge site, and we are currently in the planning and preparation stage of development. The Health Department has purchased a community outreach van to increase health accessibility in our community. Nurses, harm reduction staff, and others will provide health screenings, including rapid HIV/HEPC and other STI testing, immunizations, naloxone education and distribution, and other services out in our community and to help fair events. The van is equipped with a private space and patient chair for blood work, a sink, and a clinical workstation. We appreciate our partnership with the Hartford County government to procure this van to help meet the health needs of Hartford County residents. The State of Maryland has established immunization requirements for all students entering and enrolled in Maryland schools. Our clinical services team led by Melissa Neary is dedicated to ensuring students receive their vaccines so they are not excluded from school. We continue to host our immunization clinic every Tuesday from 8:30 to 3:30, and the first and third Wednesday of the month from 3:00 to 6:00. Last month, additional clinics were added on September 20th and 23rd to help students who still need their required immunizations. In addition, we are in the planning process of holding an evening flu clinic. And just yesterday, Melissa reported that this time last year, we had 245 students excluded for noncompliance, and this year on exclusion day, which is 20 days after the school year starts, we had 93. So, this is a nice downward trend, and we seem to be reaching more kids. So, we want you to stay up to date with your COVID vaccine, your COVID-19 vaccine. Everyone ages six months and older should get a 2024/25 COVID-19 vaccine. The COVID vaccine helps protect you from severe disease, hospitalization, and death. Getting a COVID vaccine is a safer, more reliable way to build protection than getting sick with COVID. Getting the 2024/25 COVID vaccine is important because protection from the COVID vaccine decreases with time, and COVID vaccines are updated to give you the best protection from the currently circulating strains. Getting the 2024/25 COVID vaccine is especially important if you never received a COVID vaccine, are ages 65 and older, are at high risk for severe COVID, are living in a long-term care facility, are pregnant breastfeeding, trying to get pregnant or might become pregnant in the future, want to lower your risk of getting long COVID. And this is a reminder that you can get your flu vaccine and COVID-19 vaccine at the same Our Care Coordination Plus team led by Kim Prouse is back out in the community this flu season to help vaccinate homebound individuals. We recommend a yearly flu vaccine as the first and most important action to reducing your risk of flu and its potentially serious outcomes. For 2024/25, all flu vaccines will be designed to protect against three influenza viruses: A H1N1 virus, A H3N2 virus, and influenza B, Victoria Lineage Virus. Everyone six months and older should get an annual flu vaccine, ideally by the end of October, and homebound individuals who need a flu vaccine should contact the CC+ We are pleased to offer integrated behavioral health and primary care at the Health Department. One of our certified psychiatric nurse practitioners on staff is also a board-approved general medicine practitioner. For those clients enrolled in our behavioral health services, we are able to coordinate providing primary care medical services to them as well. And given the comorbid nature of mental health, substance use, and medical conditions, this was a much-needed service that we are pleased to offer our clients. These services are provided in conjunction with behavioral health care, received at our facility, and covered by insurance. All services are provided on-site, including a comprehensive assessment, lab workups, additional medical screenings, and services, medication management. Should a client require more intensive or additional treatment, referrals are made to local providers. Kudos to Andrea Pappas, Director of our Behavioral Health, Katie Hart, Assistant Director, and Dr. Julie Stancliff, our Medical Director for Behavioral Health, and their team for the many creative programs that they have in their unit that contribute to serving our community. Our school-based health centers program is committed to providing health care, mental health care, and preventative services to students who may lack access to health care. These services are provided at four Title I elementary schools and the Swan Creek School in Hartford County. The schools we serve are Edgewood Elementary, Halls Crossroads Elementary, Magnolia Elementary, Old Post Road Elementary, and Swan Creek. We are excited to announce that in September, our school-based health center program expanded at Swan Creek to include seeing Aberdeen High School students. A long time coming. Per and polyfluoroalkyl substance, in April 2024, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency announced finalized regulations for PFAS in drinking water. Public water systems affected by these regulations will be required to be in full compliance by 2029. The Maryland Department of Environment initiated a PFAS monitoring program of public water systems in September 2020. Though additional monitoring needs to be completed, it is important that residents are being educated about PFAS and PFOA chemicals. August 5th, 2024, five Hartford County schools prohibited students from consuming water due to PFAS contamination. Hartford County Executive Bob Cassely issued an executive order establishing the Drinking Water PFAS Task Force in Hartford County on August 30th, 2024. Health Department staff, including John Resline and Rania Nasar, attended the first meeting on September 5th, 2024. The Hartford County Health Department links the Maryland Department of Environment's PFAS pages on our website. Private wells are not regulated by the state or federal government with respect to PFAS monitoring. It is the responsibility of the individual homeowners to test and maintain their well and water supply piping. Thank you all for your time.
Marcy, as always, thank you for your presentation and updates, and I want to thank you again personally for my colleagues and I, for your availability. You and the members of your team are always available when we have issues, and we do have a few. There's no question about that. We do get quite a few calls, but you guys are there to dive into it and see if there's an answer or a reason, and I do appreciate that. As I look through your report, in the one section on page four, you're talking about touching almost 100,000 citizens, and it's just, these are amazing numbers, and I don't know if you're prepared to answer that. I should know it, but I don't off the top of my head. What is your overall budget, dollar-wise?
It's about $27 million at this point.
And how much of that is state?
About, core funding, about $5 million. You want collections and things like that?
Everything, yeah. I know that the county--
Oh, I'm going off the top of my head. So, collections, do you have the form? Collections, last year was $5 million. County gave us $5 million, and then we have categorical grants for each program, and they can only be used for that particular program. So, whatever that other stuff equals, add that up.
All right. Well, thank you for that.
Sure. Some of that is COVID funding.
Yep.
They actually let us extend it over to another year, so that's been generous with that.
No, I appreciate that. I often get asked, what is the county's portion of your overall budget? So, I just thought it would be a great question to get on the record, answer here on the record. So, council, anyone? Mr. Janjordana?
Marcy, good evening.
Good evening.
Talk to me about this COVID stuff. Where does all this information come from?
Oh, goodness. You want Dr. Cybill to come up?
Well, I'm more concerned with where the directive is coming from to get your COVID vaccine shot, everybody six months of older, and all that information. Is that coming from--
We get our guidance from Maryland Department of Health.
So, they tell you what you should say, and you guys have to regurgitate it and say it back to the public?
Yeah, pretty much, yes. Those are the guidelines that come from--
What if the public doesn't agree with that?
Well, they don't always.
No, they don't. The doctors I talk to certainly are not agreeing with it.
Understand that.
And I know there's different opinions, and everybody's got their different opinions, but I was kind of a little disappointed, I guess, in maybe seeing this, but, you know, I don't know. A lot of people did get the COVID shot, two, three, and they still got COVID, but yet here they're saying, get the COVID shot, it's going to keep you from getting COVID, and that certainly hasn't been proven, has it?
Not necessarily, because you're correct, people are getting it.
And people still get it.
Maybe not as severe.
Right. Now, what is long COVID?
Oh, that's, oh, gosh. I don't know the technical terminology for it, but it has all these side effects that last for, all these side effects that last for a pretty long time.
Okay. So, get your flu shot together with COVID and everything. So, have they said that the strains are getting less resilient because it's out there more than, is that what--
I think it's becoming a little bit more mainstream, like the flu, you know, you just kind of want to prepare yourself with a flu shot every year, same with COVID. It's just preparation. It's not like it was in the pandemic, but it's kind of more mainstream now.
And I have heard of people getting COVID. Now, I don't know if they're getting tested by themselves, and they're saying they have COVID, or if they're going to the doctor and the doctor's testing them, and I don't know if that's the instant test, or is there, is there a different test out there now other than the different test, and if you don't use that kit within, what was it, like six weeks, they're--
There is an expiration date on this kit.
So, is there a different test now for COVID?
Well, there's always been the other, there's the instant one, but there's always been the other one, and Dr. Cybill, what is that called? The other test?
PCR.
The PCR one, yeah.
Ms. Cybill, can you come forward, please, and sit and take a mic?
You can take these technical--
I should say, doc.
So, in addition to Maryland Department of Health recommendations, we base our recommendations off the CDC, who does recommend that those six months and older get the vaccine. They're not requiring it by any means. It's just a recommendation.
Gotcha.
And then, in terms of it preventing COVID, at this point, the main argument is that it prevents severe disease, hospitalization, and death. The concern, those are much bigger concerns. Whether or not one gets COVID, it's thought to be more mild if they have the vaccine.
Okay, doc, so the $1 million question, do you have all your COVID shots?
I am scheduled next week.
Okay. Do you recommend everybody get their COVID shots?
I recommend that everyone makes the best decision for themselves.
Okay, that's fair. Well, I saw this, this was a concern, I wanted to address it. I didn't want the people that are listening just to blindly take what was said and run with it without questions, because I certainly have questions and different opinion, but I appreciate your answering that, your opinion on this, and thank you very much. So, I appreciate that. And I have another question.
Oh.
Yeah.
You need John.
Well, I don't know if we need John, but we still get a disconnect. Guys do a great job. I know disagreements here and there and stuff, but we do have a disconnect, and it seems like it's between Baltimore County and Hartford County when it comes to food service trucks, food service restaurants, and I know we've talked about this where it's, Baltimore County has their own Health Department, and we follow more the state rules, but, you know, when we're getting a lot of restaurateurs that are coming from Baltimore County up here, there is certainly a big difference. And one of the simplest things I could say is, when Jimmy John's went out of business and the other place went in there that was doing the yogurt and everything, the biggest issue was the light in the bathroom wasn't bright enough. It was bright enough for Jimmy John's, but it wasn't bright enough for them, and I thought, boy, that really doesn't make any sense. How, I mean, the light standard changed, but it's more than that. It's just, we're hearing that, and I know, you know, we had an issue with a pasta machine that was certainly approved down in Baltimore County, but it didn't have certain labels and standards, even though it was the largest pasta machine maker in the world, that we had a hard time getting it approved. Finally, we got all the specs and everything, got it approved, and hopefully, we don't run into that issue again, but just, and I don't know how to--
I know.
I don't know how to answer and work through with people, but I'm getting people that I deal with on the other side of my business all the time, because they know what I do, complaining about it. So, my complaints then are--
So, Baltimore County is a home rule county, so they follow different, we follow the state guidelines, MDE, we're going to stick to them. You don't usually do, but we--
How does Baltimore County, then, who do they answer to? If they don't--
That I don't know. Maybe John knows, I don't know, but I know that it's--
We can put John on the hot seat.
Yeah, if you want to. Maybe he can try to pronounce poly whatever.
No, listen. We're city.
Now, you do want to be done by 7:30, correct?
No.
Uh-oh.
We want you to answer his question.
So, Baltimore County does answer to MDH. You know, there are, the state sets the minimum standards in COMAR, and then Baltimore County has its own set of regulations. Now, you know, what I will say is, there are more than one occasion where Baltimore County has been approving things that the state does not approve, and when we brought that to the state's attention, they've addressed it with Baltimore County. So, like, I can think of that on a number of occasions, on a number of food trucks, where Baltimore County was told by Maryland Department of Health that you shouldn't be approving this, and Hartford County was correct. The only other thing, I guess I want to mention is, when you do a preopening inspection, like in this place, you know, you could check the lighting when the fixtures are new and the bulbs are new, and they could be okay, and then as, you know, time goes by, months go by, et cetera, the fixture may lose its efficiency or its brightness, or whatever.
But you don't go to a restaurant that's been open for 15 or 20 years and make them change the bulbs.
Well, the other thing that happens sometimes is, facilities make changes after the approval has been made. So, it's like, you know, because I did plan review for 10 years, I know I went into many places where things were okay at the time of preopening, I would say, and then when you go out to do a routine inspection, things have been altered or changed or, you know, removed, et cetera. I mean, I've seen like whole areas of kitchen modified without approval. The issue with the pasta maker that you mentioned was, we have a whole plan, we have a whole plan review process that happens during preopening. You know, give us your plans, tell us what you're proposing, give us the equipment specifications, and we'll vet that at the time we issue the building permit. Now, with the pasta machine, that was--
That was something they decided they were going to do after they opened it--
Yeah, correct.
Because one of their other locations were doing it. So, it wouldn't have been in the original plans, but they said, hey, let's use fresh pasta and do fresh pasta, let's use the same machine that we got Baltimore County and Howard County. Lo and behold, Hartford County says, sorry, you can't use this because it's not approved.
Well, so initially, that was the response, because we hadn't seen it, we didn't have the specifications, we didn't do our due diligence on that piece of equipment, it just sort of was there. You know, so you go out to do a preopening inspection, and here it is, and then you're looking for, you know, the basic certifications that are present in the regulation, you know, NSF, ETL, BISC, you know, CRMA, whatever, and that pasta unit didn't have it, so then, you know, we gathered our information and consulted with the state, and they basically said, yeah, this has all the criteria that, you know, can be acceptable. It's non-toxic material, it's non-toxic, you know, food contact surfaces, it's cleanable, et cetera, you guys can approve it. So, then we did. Had they sort of been forthcoming with, hey, we're thinking of adding this before we open, we could have done that on the front end instead of retroactively.
Yeah, I don't think they were planning on doing that. But, last question, food trucks. We're hearing some differences on food trucks with one-day permits and one year, where they get a one-day permit, there's no big issue, but then when they go to do a whole year, they have to get this whole fire suppression system and everything. Why such a difference between a one day and a year?
So, the, I guess, the section of the regulation that has to do with a special temporary event has certain requirements that you have to comply with. When you get an annual license, then there's a, I guess, the intent is that you comply with the, you know, whole regulation as written for that type of annual, you know, annually permitted operating facility, because it's going to be wherever, whenever, during the course of the year in Hartford County. So, with that case, when we asked the fire marshal about food trucks, they were like, if it has a, you know, a hood system over grease-producing equipment, it should have fire suppression. So, that's when that requirement came to be enforced, when you're, you know, getting an annual license for a food truck that has, you know, fryers or grills or whatever being exhausted by, you know, grease extraction hood.
And is that what Baltimore County is also requiring in the other counties, or should they be requiring, and maybe they're not?
I would, you know, so I would say, I would think they should be requiring it because it was coming to us from the state fire marshal. You know, the fire marshal was saying, these type of, you know, uses with this type of ventilation should have fire suppression. So, I would think the fire marshal in Hartford County would be providing the same information to Baltimore County.
I would hope that all food trucks, as they operate, whether operating one day or annually, are all treated the same way, and they're all done that way, but apparently that doesn't seem to be the process. It seems like they're doing these food trucks in, you know, a little bit different, and then they ask for one day, and then they ask for annuals. I can't believe where they're at, whether it's Baltimore County, Baltimore City, Howard County, they're not approving them to begin with. If they're going to operate, they've-- If they're going to operate, they've got to operate with fire suppression systems, and we wouldn't run into this problem, but we are running into this problem. So that was my other question. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
You did a great job, John. Sit tight. Mr. Pennman.
I just wanted to say, I know, I feel like it's just yesterday you guys did a presentation. I just, thank you for coming here and updating us. And we look forward to helping you with anything you need in the future. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Penn, or Mr. Riley.
Yes, how you doing, Marcy?
Good, how are you?
Do we have a local health improvement coalition?
Yes, we do, and it is divided into three groups. We have Local Health Improvement Coalition for Behavioral Health. We have one for Family Health, and then we have one for Chronic Disease.
And is it possible for me to get the names of those three groups?
Yes, and you're welcome to join any of those meetings.
I'll take you up on all three.
Okay, yep.
The next thing, the snapshots of services for F Y twenty-four. Do we have, I don't know, a pie chart or something that shows us where all these services are being dealt with? Maybe by zip code or district or however you break them down so that we can see what's going on in our personal district?
So each program reports to, for the county stats. So they each provide their numbers, either monthly or quarterly, to us, to Rania, excuse me. And she puts them in a spreadsheet, so we have them, we can get that.
So I can get a pie chart or something of these?
We can get you something from each program, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the last thing, I see school-based health centers, and these are all Title X schools?
Title V, Title I, sorry.
Title I, sorry. And do we have any up north?
No, we don't.
We have no Title I's?
Nope.
It's all those rich folks up there.
It's all those rich folks out there. However, we do have a couple of programs up there that I wrote to you about. We do have the.
And I appreciate that. I was just wondering if we had any up north.
None, and that's the school system delegating it.
Well, I understand that, but if we had some up north, I needed to know who to deal with, because these are all.
They're based on free and reduced lunch statistics.
Thanks, Marcy.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Riley, Mr. Guthrie. Thank you. Jim's one of them rich guys up there, too.
I see that.
Of course, thank you for all you do and help with that neighbor I got next door. If I'm president at HOA, and sooner or later, we'll get those people thrown out, but it's taken a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of effort. It's a mess and spending, you know, you've seen it, it's terrible. But I thank you for all your help. And I've had all three of my shots, my wife has all three of them, and my 98-year-old mother-in-law has all three of her shots, and none of us has caught the COVID. So if it ain't working, it's working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie, Mr. Bennett.
Hello.
How are you?
Good evening, it's good to be with you first. Thank you, it seems like every community event I'm at, the health department's at. So thank you for being where people are and making sure people get services. A couple of quick thoughts first, just to make sure everybody who's watching understands, Title I designation is a federal designation, it's based on the federal Title I funding. So it's not necessarily local discretion on where your Title I schools, it's just the population of your community that determines that. So if you have enough children who receive free and reduced meals due to economic standing of their family, you're a Title I school. But I just thought maybe for a future presentation, it'd be really nice to see the previous year's snapshot next to this year, so we can see those changes at a glance of, you know, what are we having more of, less of? So it kind of gives, I think, people watching the sense of a trend in the community.
Okay, yeah.
So that was just one thought. I was curious if there's any updates on minority health specifically? It seemed like some of the things you shared could fit under that umbrella, but are there any, anything outside of what you shared for updates on minority health programs?
I actually think Felicia did something today, didn't you, Felicia? Felicia, you had a group today, or was it? You want to come tell us? I like bringing people up. If you have to talk into that.
Hello, Councilman Jacob, thank you for bringing that up. We did just have an event today, we have monthly events. We have monthly events in Windsor Valley Community Center, Village at Lakeview, Havitt Grace, the Somerset location, and we have themes that deal with mental health. Of course, we are piloting our new program called Parent Talks. And that was birthed out of the community conversations that you and your wife and others that might be in the room attended. We got together with some elected officials, with some members of the sheriff department, and lay members in community-based organizations, and we talked about the concerns they had. And birthed out of that, residents wanted to talk about their mental health, things going on in their home. And to our credit, Hartford County is resource-rich, but a lot of people don't always have access to those resources. So Parent Talks is something that we developed with some local therapists and doctors and psychologists that live right here in Hartford County that are going to go around the community along with some other members that live along the Route Forty corridor and have open-ended discussions about mental health, multigenerational conversations, and resources from the health department and Upper Chesapeake Health. We just talked to Vicki Bens today and see what contributions that they can make to those talks. So we'll have team leads around the community. So yes, the minority health program is alive and active. Any council member is welcome to come or welcome to view what we do. Of course, the youth symposium coming up. We would love to see you all come to the YMCA in Abingdon, because it's open to every middle and high school young lady in the county. We do do the Young Men in May, we have a great time, and this is our outreach. So yes, does that answer?
When you get the advertisement for the youth symposium coming up, can you email it to us to share?
We have an official flyer, we have, yeah, we have an official flyer that is on our social media page, yes, there you go. It's in there, and you can register, you can come. You can even have, while I have a moment, to give words of encouragement to our young people from the council. We have a welcome loop that we play, and we've had Rania on there, we've had others, we've had Judge Eves, we've had, yeah, we have H E C President Dr. Teresa Felder come out and give words of encouragement. So if you want to give a 30-second video presentation, just, my name is Council President Patrick Pacenti. I'm so glad that you all are taking charge of your mental health, so glad to see you all, be encouraged, you're in great hands, just something simple like that. I can send you a little example of how that works. The young people love it, and we love on them. And we bring a lot of resources from around the county, like the Department of Defense, the Proving Ground Credit Union, and others. They all come with information for our parents and students.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure the work of minority health was amplified, because, you know, the more people know about it, the more it can be celebrated. It's a really special thing in Hartford County.
Thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Jacob. With some people, of course, because I can't give shots.
One last quick question about PFAS. I know by regulation right now, you know, we don't handle private well inspection, and I know in your presentation, it talks about the importance of the homeowner taking care of that. But I just think it's, I mean, important to recognize that what's in your well water isn't necessarily due to the actions done on your property. You know, if you live near the Proving Ground, if you live near where heavy agricultural use is happening, if you live near where fire department materials have been used recently, you run the risk of PFAS chemicals being in your groundwater. And it has nothing to do with your personal responsibility or not, if you're at an increased risk due to those risk factors that we know for PFAS. And so I, you know, I would hope that the federal, state government get behind the fact that, you know, we have to keep our people from all the things that come from PFAS, whether they drink well water or our county water. Because, I mean, it's a real risk, and we know living your bodies of water increases your risk. Living new government, military facilities increase your risk, and living near farmland increase your risk, which just means welcome to Hartford County. But, so I just think it's very important we have that conversation. I don't think it's as simple as saying, you know, take care of your well water if you're on private well. Yes. And I've actually encouraged the county executive to add someone who has private well water to the task force, to make sure that community voice is heard.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Felicia, thank you for your comments as well. Marcy, I want to thank you for your presentation. We're going to move into some other Board of Health business. Board of Health appointments, Office of Mental Health, Core Service Agency of Hartford County Incorporated. Mr. Bennett may have a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve the appointment of Michael Bassler and Marcus Webster to the Office of Mental Health, Core Services Agency of Hartford County, Board of Director.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's been moved and seconded to approve the two new appointments. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, hearing none? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Absteen.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one abstention, the appointment is hereby approved, or the appointments are hereby approved. This will go ahead and conclude our Board of Health updates and presentation. Want to thank you for coming and thank you all for your service to Hartford County and its citizens. Thank you. We'll go ahead and get started in our regular session. Going to call to order our legislative session, Day 24 dash zero 26. Would ask you to please stand for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilman Riley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the gift of life, the opportunity to serve the people of our county. I pray that you will guide our council as they meet and discuss matters with regard to our county. I pray that their motivation and everything they want to do is for the good of the public and not our own. I pray that we'll be able to solve our county's problems and make good policies that address them. Help us to be competent and excellent in our governance. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with clarity and restraint, and give us all a spirit of service. In your most blessed name, I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Counsel, if I may, before we move to Agenda Item Number Four, I just want to give a shout out to our cameraman, John, and also Deputy Sharp for coming to his aid after a recent council meeting. He was accidentally struck by a car. And glad to see you here tonight, and glad to see that you're doing well. Agenda Number Four, Presentation of Proclamations. Crystal Henzel, Addicted Play, Alex's Story, Mr. Pennman.
Right here in the front, Ben.
Tara, you want to come up, too? Crystal, I just want to thank you for everything you've done for Hartford County using your talents for recovery.
Read this proclamation before you go further.
I got ahead of myself, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
You did.
How'd you not?
Whereas the arts and humanities play a crucial role in capturing the essence of the human experience, fostering dialogue and nurturing empathy among diverse communities. And whereas the month of October is celebrated as National Arts and Humanities Month, recognizing and honoring those whose contribution enlighten society and inspire action through creative expression. And whereas Crystal Henzel, through her compelling plays, Addicted and Addicted, Alex's Story sheds light on the impact of addiction, offering insights from the perspective of both individuals facing addiction and their loved ones. These plays provide a powerful educational experience that emphasizes prevention and awareness, challenging stigmas, and promoting empathy and understanding in society. And whereas Addicted and Addicted, Alex's Story, serves as instrumental tools for sparking open conversation and dialogue about substance use, ultimately fostering connection and providing hope to those impacted by addiction. Now, therefore, we, the County Council of Hartford County, Maryland, on this eighth day of October, 2024, do hereby recognize Crystal Henzel, National Arts and Humanities Month for her extraordinary contribution to the arts, her impactful storytelling, not only enriches our cultural landscape, but also spearheads crucial conversations about addiction and recovery.
Thank you, Tony. Crystal, on behalf of the council, I want to present to you this proclamation in appreciation, again, for your talents and your efforts to Hartford County. I know you've been a counselor for the public education. I know you've been a counselor to a lot of those that are in recovery. Crystal and I became friends when we were working on a project with the CORE program for that middle-aged foundational drug education. And she developed scripts so these kids would understand, recognize, and have the skills to stay away from drugs. So thank you for your efforts. Before I turn this mic over to you, I do want to offer it to Tara. I didn't tell Tara, just to say a few words and then turn it over to you. And I would like to acknowledge that I've seen Alex's Story, great job. And they are presenting in New York later this month, the play. So it's a tremendous play. If you haven't seen it, you might want to go do it. So Tara?
Well, I was telling Crystal about talking tonight. You know, it's been my honor and privilege to work closely with Crystal over the past several years. Julio here is the main character. You know, you have done a fantastic job. Each time I've seen it, I have cried. Every time, I must say, it gets better and better. And right now, if you have not seen the play, I encourage everyone to go see it. I think Crystal might give a little bit of an announcement of when you might be able to see it again. But congratulations, Crystal. I know your heart and soul has been in this. And through it all, we've become really good friends, and I'm just so grateful for that.
Thank you for the acknowledgement. So my brother struggled with substance abuse, and it was really through his story and so many others that I felt the need to educate youth and others in prevention and awareness efforts. So I will stay committed to that cause, and I just want to say thank you. We do have an upcoming performance locally. It's going to be at the Havitt Gray State Theater, January 25th at 8:00 P. M. And if you follow us on Facebook, Addicted to Play, you'll see more advertisements for upcoming shows. So thank you so much, thank you for the acknowledgement.
Agenda Number Five, Consideration of Petitions, Applications, Appointments, and Nominations. Executive Appointments, James V, Captain Jim McMahon, Commission on Veterans Affairs. Mr. Pennman may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the new appointment of William Richardson.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Been moved and seconded to approve the new appointment. Is there any discussion? Mr. Riley?
Yes, I'd like to recognize Ryan, he's in the audience. Ryan, thank you for coming and also volunteering for this commission. We appreciate your service and also the service of your family to Hartford County. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Pennman?
I also want to thank you for your service of being here. I know it's not the Marine Corps, but it's the Navy, it's the closest thing, so I welcome you aboard. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
With seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Sir, congratulations, would you please rise and be recognized? There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Sir, congratulations. Would you please rise and be recognized? Mental Health and Addictions Advisory Board, Mr. Penman?
Council President, I move to approve the new appointment of Genevieve Foley.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new appointment. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Will Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. I do not see Ms. Foley in the audience, but we're going to thank her for her service. Six special presentations, we have none. Seven approval of minutes, public hearing October first, 2024, legislative day twenty-four dash zero twenty-five, October first, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Resolution zero fourteen dash twenty-four, Master Water and Sewer Plan Fall 2024 Update. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the resolution fourteen dash twenty-four.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution zero fourteen dash twenty-four. Any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Will Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. I do not see Ms. Foley in the audience, but we're going to thank her for her service. Six special presentations, we have none. Seven approval of minutes, public hearing October first, 2024, legislative day twenty-four dash zero twenty-five, October first, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Resolution zero fourteen dash twenty-four, Master Water and Sewer Plan Fall 2024 Update. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the resolution fourteen dash twenty-four.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution zero fourteen dash twenty-four. Any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Will Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. I do not see Ms. Foley in the audience, but we're going to thank her for her service. Six special presentations, we have none. Seven approval of minutes, public hearing October first, 2024, legislative day twenty-four dash zero twenty-five, October first, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Resolution zero fourteen dash twenty-four, Master Water and Sewer Plan Fall 2024 Update. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the resolution fourteen dash twenty-four.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution zero fourteen dash twenty-four. Any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Will Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Sir, congratulations. Would you please rise and be recognized? Mental Health and Addictions Advisory Board, Mr. Penman?
Council President, I move to approve the new appointment of Genevieve Foley.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. It's been moved and seconded to approve the new appointment. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Will Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. I do not see Ms. Foley in the audience, but we're going to thank her for her service. Six special presentations, we have none. Seven approval of minutes, public hearing October first, 2024, legislative day twenty-four dash zero twenty-five, October first, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Resolution zero fourteen dash twenty-four, Master Water and Sewer Plan Fall 2024 Update. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the resolution fourteen dash twenty-four.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution zero fourteen dash twenty-four. Any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Will Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. I do not see Ms. Foley in the audience, but we're going to thank her for her service. Six special presentations, we have none. Seven approval of minutes, public hearing October first, 2024, legislative day twenty-four dash zero twenty-five, October first, 2024. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, the minutes stand approved. Eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions. Resolution zero fourteen dash twenty-four, Master Water and Sewer Plan Fall 2024 Update. May I have a motion?
Council President, I move to approve the resolution fourteen dash twenty-four.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution zero fourteen dash twenty-four. Any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mr. Penman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Will Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointment is hereby approved. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read Resolution zero eighteen twenty-four into the record.
Resolution eighteen dash twenty-four, Enterprise Zone, two fifty Old Bay Lane, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the purchase of Hartford County, Maryland, the county pursuant to the Hartford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program and Article Two of Chapter Sixty of the Hartford County Code as amended, the Agricultural Land Preservation Act of Developmental Potential as defined in the Agricultural Land Preservation Act in approximately ninety-four acres, more or less, of agricultural land located at eight twenty-two Aldino Stephanie Road, Aberdeen, Maryland, twenty-one zero zero one within the county, containing approximately five development rights, more or less pursuant to a perpetual easement restricting use of such land to agricultural use from Mary Ray Evans, Mark Lee Davis, and Deborah Lynn Holcomb or any other owner thereof, for an aggregate purchase price not to exceed five hundred thousand, provided, however, that the actual amount of the purchase price shall be determined as provided herein pursuant to the Agricultural Land Preservation Act, providing for a one-time cash incentive payment authorizing the county executive and treasurer to make modifications to the agreement of sale under certain circumstances, providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth, 2024, at six forty-five in these council chambers. Resolution zero twenty-one dash twenty. Resolution zero twenty-one dash twenty-four, Agricultural Preservation, Calvary Road, Bel Air, Lomax, as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the purchase by Hartford County, Maryland, the county pursuant to the Hartford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program and Article Two of Chapter Sixty of the Hartford County Code as amended, the Agricultural Land Preservation Act of Developmental Potential as defined in the Agricultural Land Preservation Act in approximately sixty-seven point one acres, more or less, of agricultural land located at sixteen twelve Calvary Road, Bel Air, Maryland, twenty-one fifteen within the county, containing approximately six development rights and two family conveyances, more or less pursuant to a perpetual easement restricting use of such land to agricultural use from the resident, residuary trust under the Donald L. Lomax revocable trust as to one-half interest in the land and the Margaret F. Lomax revocable trust as to the remaining one-half interest in the land or any other owner thereof, for an aggregate purchase price not to exceed four hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred. Provided, however, that the actual amount of the purchase price shall be determined as provided herein pursuant to the Agricultural Land Preservation Act, providing for a one-time cash incentive payment authorizing the county executive and treasurer to make modifications to the agreement of sale under certain circumstances, providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth, 2024, at six forty-five in these council chambers. Resolution zero twenty-two dash twenty-four, Agricultural Preservation, Carrington Road, Darlington, eleven eleven oh five Main Street LLC as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the purchase of Hartford County, Maryland, the county pursuant to the Hartford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program and Article Two of Chapter Sixty of the Hartford County Code as amended, the Agricultural Land Preservation Act of Developmental Potential as defined in the Agricultural Land Preservation Act in approximately twenty-nine point one seven two acres, more or less, of agricultural land located at two thousand seventeen Carrington Road, Darlington, Maryland, two one oh three four, within the county, containing approximately three development rights and one family conveyance, more or less pursuant to a perpetual easement restricting use of such land to agricultural use from Cy Cicon or any other owner thereof, for an aggregate purchase price not to exceed five hundred thousand, provided, however, that the actual amount of the purchase price shall be determined as provided herein pursuant to the Agricultural Land Preservation Act, providing for a one-time cash incentive payment authorizing the county executive and treasurer to make modifications to the agreement of sale under certain circumstances, providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth, 2024, at six forty-five in these council chambers. Resolution zero twenty-seven dash twenty-four, Agricultural Preservation, Federal Hill Road, Street, Smith Trust as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the purchase by Hartford County, Maryland, the county pursuant to the Hartford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program and Article Two of Chapter Sixty of the Hartford County Code as amended, the Agricultural Land Preservation Act of Developmental Potential as defined in the Agricultural Land Preservation Act in approximately nineteen point eight five three nine acres, more or less, of agricultural land located at eight thirty-four Federal Hill Road, Street, Maryland, twenty-one, two one one five four within the county, containing approximately one development right, more or less pursuant to a perpetual easement restricting use of such land to agricultural use from the Patricia C. Smith and Francis Barry Smith revocable trust or any other owner thereof, for an aggregate purchase price not to exceed one hundred thousand, provided, however, that the actual amount of the purchase price shall be determined as provided herein pursuant to the Agricultural Land Preservation Act, authorizing the county executive and treasurer to make modifications to the agreement of sale under certain circumstances, providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth, 2024, at six forty-five in these council chambers. Resolution zero twenty-eight dash twenty-four, Agricultural Preservation, Island Branch Road, Whitehall, Worwich, as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the purchase of Hartford County, Maryland, the county pursuant to the Hartford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program and Article Two of Chapter Sixty of the Hartford County Code as amended, the Agricultural Land Preservation Act of Developmental Potential as defined in the Agricultural Land Preservation Act in approximately twenty-two point six two five acres, more or less, of agricultural land located at twenty-three ninety-nine Island Branch Road, Whitehall, Maryland, two one one six one and twenty-four twenty-one Island Branch Road, Whitehall, Maryland, two one one six one, within the county, containing approximately one development right, more or less pursuant to the perpetual easement restricting use of such land to agricultural use from Richard W. Worwich Junior or any other owner thereof, for an aggregate purchase price not to exceed one hundred thousand, provided, however, that the actual amount of the purchase price shall be determined as provided herein pursuant to the Agricultural Land Preservation Act, authorizing the county executive and treasurer to make modifications to the agreement of sale under certain circumstances, providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth, 2024, at six forty-five in these council chambers. Resolution zero twenty-nine dash twenty-four, Agricultural Preservation, Jarrettsville Pike, Jarrettsville, Nickman, as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the purchase of Hartford County, Maryland, the county pursuant to the Hartford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program and Article Two of Chapter Sixty of the Hartford County Code as amended, the Agricultural Land Preservation Act of Developmental Potential as defined in the Agricultural Land Preservation Act in approximately eleven acres, more or less, of agricultural land located at thirty-eight sixty-eight Jarrettsville Pike, Jarrettsville, Maryland, two one oh eight four, within the county, containing approximately one development right, more or less pursuant to the perpetual easement restricting use of such land to the agricultural use from Carol S. Nickman and Edward T. Nickman Junior or any other owner thereof, for an aggregate purchase price not to exceed seventy-six thousand, nine hundred, nine dollars and twenty-five cents, provided, however, that the actual amount of the purchase price shall be determined as provided herein pursuant to the Agricultural Land Preservation Act, providing for a one-time cash incentive payment authorizing the county executive and treasurer to make modifications to the agreement of sale under certain circumstances, providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth, 2024, at six forty-five in these council chambers. Resolution thirty dash twenty-four, Agricultural Preservation, Line Bridge Road, Whiteford, Marrianto, as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the purchase by Hartford County, Maryland, the county pursuant to the Hartford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program and Article Two of Chapter Sixty of the Hartford County Code as amended, the Agricultural Land Preservation Act of Developmental Potential as defined in the Agricultural Land Preservation Act in approximately twenty-seven point six four three acres, more or less, of agricultural land located at twenty-two oh five Line Bridge Road, Whiteford, Maryland, two one one six oh, within the county, containing approximately two development rights, more or less pursuant to a perpetual easement restricting use of such land to agricultural use from Daniel V. Marrianto, or any other owner thereof, for an aggregate purchase price not to exceed one hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred and one, provided, however, that the actual amount of the purchase price shall be determined as provided herein pursuant to the Agricultural Land Preservation Act, authorizing the county executive and treasurer to make modifications to the agreement of sale under certain circumstances, providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth, 2024, at six forty-five in these council chambers. Resolution thirty-one dash twenty-four, Agricultural Preservation, Old Level Road, Havert Grace Galleon, as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the purchase by Hartford County, Maryland, pursuant to the Hartford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program, Article Two of Chapter Sixty of the Hartford County Code as amended, the Agricultural Land Preservation Act of Developmental Potential as defined in the Agricultural Land Preservation Act in approximately one hundred and twenty-seven point three one four acres, more or less, of agricultural land located at thirty-six oh five Old Level Road, Havert Grace, Maryland, two one oh seven eight, within the county, containing approximately nine development rights, more or less pursuant to the perpetual easement restricting use of such land to agricultural use from Nolan easement restricting use of such land to agriculture use from Nolan W. Gallant-Gallion, Sr., or any other owner there, for for an aggregate purchase price not to exceed eight-hundred-ninety-one-thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-eight, provided, however, that the actual amount of the purchase price shall be determined as provided herein pursuant to the Agricultural Land Preservation Act, providing for a one-time cash incentive payment authorizing the county executive and treasurer to make modifications to the agreement of sale under certain circumstances, providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, at six forty-five P. M. in these council chambers. Resolution zero thirty-two dash twenty-four Agricultural Preservation Pool Road Street, Glacken Family Trust, as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the purchase by Harford County, Maryland, the county pursuant to the Harford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program in Article Two of Chapter Sixty of the Harford County Code as amended, the Agricultural Land Preservation Act of the developmental potential as defined by the Agricultural Land Preservation Act and approximately thirty-three-point-eight-zero-three acres, more or less, of agricultural land located on the north side of Pool Road, thirteen-hundred-twenty feet east of Whiteford Road, Street, Maryland, two-one-one-five-four, also identified as parcel one-twenty-nine on tax map nineteen within the county, containing approximately two developmental rights, more or less pursuant to a perpetual restricting restricting use of such land to agriculture use from Glacken Family Trust, or any other owner there, for for an aggregate purchase price not to exceed two-hundred thousand, provided, however, that the actual amount of the purchase price shall be determined as provided herein pursuant to the Agricultural Land Preservation Act authorizing the county executive and treasurer to make modifications to the agreement of sale under certain circumstances, providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, at six thirty P. M. in these council chambers.
Six forty-five.
Six forty-five. Resolution zero three-three dash twenty-four Agricultural Preservation Quaker Bottom Road, Havertown Grace, Maryland, Wallace-Walikowski, six forty-five, as as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the purchase by Harford County, Maryland, the county pursuant to Harford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program in Article Two of Chapter Sixty of the Harford County Code as amended, the Agricultural Land Preservation Act of the developmental potential as defined in the Agricultural Land Preservation Act and approximately forty-seven-point-three-four-four acres, more or less, of agricultural land located at four-oh-one Quaker Bottom Road, Havertown Grace, Maryland, two-one-zero-seven-eight, within the county containing approximately three developmental rights, more or less pursuant to a perpetual easement restricting use of such land to agriculture use from Robert Linton-Walikowski, and Brittany Lynn-Walikowski, or any other owner there, for for an aggregate purchase price of not to exceed three-hundred thousand, provided, however, that the actual amount of the purchase price shall be determined as provided herein pursuant to the Agricultural Land Preservation Act authorizing the county executive and treasurer to make modifications to the agreement of sale under certain circumstances, providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, at six forty-five P. M. in these council chambers. Resolution zero thirty-four dash twenty-four Agricultural Preservation Rocks Road, Jarrettsville St. Am, as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the purchase by Harford County, Maryland, the county pursuant to the Harford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program in Article Two of Chapter Sixty of the Harford County Code as amended, the Agricultural Land Preservation Act of developmental potential as defined in the Agricultural Land Preservation Act and approximately twenty-eight-point-four-four-six acres, more or less, of agricultural land located at thirty-thirty-eight Rocks Road, thirty-twenty-four Rocks Road, and parcel two-twenty-nine on west side of Rocks Road, nineteen-hundred-and-eighteen feet north of Rocks Way, Jarrettsville, Maryland, two-one-oh-eight-four, within the county containing approximately three developmental rights, more or less, pursuant to a perpetual easement restricting use of such land to agriculture use from Gary R. St. Am and Christine M. St. Am, or any other owner there, for for an aggregate purchase price not to exceed one-hundred-ninety-nine-thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-two, provided, however, that the actual amount of the purchase price shall be determined and provided herein pursuant to the Agricultural Land Preservation Act, providing for a one-time cash incentive payment authorizing the county executive and treasurer to make modifications to the agreement of sale under certain circumstances, providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, at six forty-five P. M. in these council chambers. Resolution zero thirty-five dash twenty-four Agricultural Preservation Ruffs Mill and Connaught-Winga Roads, Bel Air, Glacken Family Trust, as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the purchase by Harford County, Maryland, pursuant to the Harford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program in Article Two of Chapter Sixty of the Harford County Code as amended, the Agricultural Land Preservation Act of developmental potential as defined in the Agricultural Land Preservation Act and approximately one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-point-two-eight acres, more or less, of agricultural land located on the south side of Ruffs-Ruffs Mill Road, thirty-five-hundred-feet east of east of the intersection with Connaught-Winga Road, Bel Air, Maryland, two-one-oh-one-five, within the county, containing approximately eleven developmental rights, more or less, pursuant to a perpetual easement restricting use of such land to agriculture use from the Glacken Family Trust, or any other owner there thereof, for an aggregate purchase price not to exceed eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand, provided, however, that the actual amount of the purchase price shall be determined as provided herein pursuant to the Agricultural Land Preservation Act, providing for a one-time cash incentive payment authorizing the county executive and treasurer to make modifications to the agreement of sale under certain circumstances, providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, at six forty-five in these council chambers. Resolution zero thirty-six dash twenty-four Agricultural Preservation Sharon Road, Jarrettsville, Mitchie, as introduced. Everybody paying attention?
Yes.
Introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the purchase by Harford County, Maryland, the county pursuant to the Harford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program in Article Two of Chapter Sixty of the Harford County Code as amended, the Agricultural Land Preservation Act of the of the developmental potential as defined in the Agricultural Land Preservation Act and approximately eighty-two-point-four-four-two-eight acres, more or less, of agricultural land located at thirty-two-seventeen, thirty-two-twenty Sharon Road, Jarrettsville, Maryland, two-one-oh-eight-four, within the county, containing approximately seven developmental rights, more or less pursuant to a perpetual easement restricting use of such land to agriculture use from Matthew Mitchie, or any other owner there, for for an aggregate purchase price not to exceed five-hundred-seventy-seven-thousand, zero-ninety-nine, and sixty cents. Provided, however, that the actual amount of the purchase price shall be determined as provided herein pursuant to the Agricultural Land Preservation Act, providing for a one-time cash incentive payment authorizing the county executive and treasurer to make modifications for the agreement of sale under certain circumstances, providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, at six forty-five P. M. in these council chambers. Resolution zero thirty-seven dash twenty-four Agricultural Preservation Urea Road, Whitehall, Hills and Hallows LLC, as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the purchase by Harford County, Maryland, the county pursuant to the Harford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program in Article Two of Chapter Sixty of the Harford County Code as amended, the Agriculture Land Preservation Act of the developmental potential as defined in the Agriculture Land Preservation Act and approximately sixty-three-point-eight acres, more or less, of agricultural land located on the south side of Urea Road, twenty-two-hundred-and-eighty feet from Norrisville Road, also identified as parcel one-oh-eight on tax map eight, on the west side of Amos Road, twelve-hundred-and-eighty feet from Arrowhead Road, also is it also identified as parcel one-fifty-seven on tax map eight, Whitehall, Maryland, two-one-one-six-one, six-one, within the county containing approximately four developmental rights, more or less, pursuant to a perpetual easement restricting use of such land to agriculture use from Hills and Halls LLC, or any other owner thereof, for an aggregate purchase price not to exceed four-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and fifty-five cents, provided, however, that the actual amount of the purchase price shall be determined as provided herein pursuant to the Agricultural Land Preservation Act, authorizing the county executive and treasurer to make modifications to the agreement of sale under certain circumstances, providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith.
Could you repeat that, please?
Yeah. Later. Resolution zero thirty-eight dash twenty-four Agricultural Preservation York Drive, Havertown Grace, Eller Mac, as introduced, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to authorize the purchase by Harford County, Maryland, the county pursuant to the Harford County Agricultural Land Preservation Program in Article Two of Chapter Sixty of the Harford County Code as amended, the Agricultural Land Preservation Act of development development potential as defined in the Agriculture Land Preservation Act and approximately eighty-one-point-two-six-four acres, more or less, of agricultural land located at thirty-eight, thirty-six York Drive, Havertown Grace, Maryland, two-one-oh-seven-eight, within the county containing and acquiring thirty-five density units, more or less, pursuant to a perpetual easement restricting use of such land to agriculture use from the Eller Mac Residence Trust, or any other owner there thereof, for an aggregate purchase price not to exceed five-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and ninety cents, provided, however, that the actual amount of the purchase price shall be determined as provided herein pursuant to the Agricultural Land Preservation Act, providing for a one-time cash incentive payment authorizing the county executive and treasurer to make modifications to the agreement of sale under certain circumstances, providing for and determining various matters in connection therewith. Public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty-twenty-four, at six forty-five in these council chambers.
Good job.
I'm done.
I think you did everything, but I think you butchered one name, but we'll let you pass. We'll let you pass. Agenda item number nine, introduction of bills we have none, ten introduction and consideration of amendments, none. Eleven, call for final reading of bills, bill twenty-four dash zero twenty-five, Mr. Riley.
You want me to read it or make a motion?
I want you to make a motion.
I just make a motion. Make a motion to approve bill twenty-four zero twenty-five.
Second.
Second.
As amended.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Jan Jardano. It's been moved and seconded to approve bill twenty-four oh twenty-five as amended. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Penman.
I just want to thank Mr. Riley for putting his bill in, and just I did add myself to one of the co-sponsors.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Jardano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, bill twenty-four oh twenty-five zoning, towing, business, and storage as amended is hereby approved. Bill twenty-four dash zero twenty-six zoning outdoor dining moratorium extension, Mr. Penman.
Council President, I move to approve bill twenty-four dash zero twenty-six zoning outdoor dining moratorium extension.
Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Jardano. It's been moved and seconded to approve bill twenty-four dash zero twenty-six. Is there any discussion, Mr. Penman?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do want to acknowledge Delegate Mike Griffith tried to put this bill in Annapolis. It was kind of derailed just on a statewide and even on a local Harvard County level. So acknowledge that he was a supporter of this bill, perhaps maybe broaden it to the whole state going forward, but I want to appreciate his efforts, too.
Thank you. Anyone else? Just- Mr. Jan Jardano.
Just that I know I've talked to a lot of business owners on this. They 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 want it. We just got to make sure that we get all our ducks in a row moving forward, that this works, and we're working on that, so.
Couldn't couldn't agree more. Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Jardano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, bill twenty-four oh twenty-six is hereby approved. Bill twenty-four oh twenty-seven revised prior bond bills, Mr. Jan Jardano.
Council President, I move to approve bill twenty-four dash zero twenty-eight.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's been moved and seconded to approve bill twenty-four oh twenty-eight. Any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Jardano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, bill twenty-four oh twenty-eight is hereby approved. Bill twenty-four oh twenty-nine, Mr. Jan Jardano.
Council President, I move to approve bill twenty-four dash zero twenty-nine.
Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It's been moved and seconded to approve bill twenty-four oh twenty-nine. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Jardano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, bill twenty-four oh twenty-nine bond authorization water and sewers hereby approved. Bill twenty-four dash zero thirty Harford County Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund, Mr. Jan Jardano.
Council President, I move to approve bill twenty-four dash zero thirty.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. It's been moved and seconded to approve bill twenty-four oh thirty. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bennett.
Hello, Mr. President. Just to reiterate our conversation from our previous council meeting, I think it's very important as this fund gets established, that we ensure that the community's voice is heard and how that money's spent, and that, you know, we really focus in on those disproportionality so that there's healing in our community, growth in our community, and people feel heard and taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Penman.
Aye.
Mr. Jan Jardano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
No.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one in the negative, bill twenty-four oh thirty Harford County Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund is hereby approved. Twelve enrollment of bills, bill twenty-four dash zero twenty-five as amended, and bills twenty-four oh twenty-six through twenty-four oh thirty are certified as the text finally passed. Thirteen unfinished business we have none. Fourteen, Ms. Brooks, you've been waiting a long time.
I've been patient.
Thank you. We're going to have our audit extension and exemption.
Yeah, so I'm here to request an extension on the time to complete the county's audits for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. To give you some background, I come for you all every year because the county charter requires that audits of the county's financial statements be completed for all the agencies that receive and disburse county funds by October thirty-first. There are a handful of agencies that receive county funds that can't complete their audits in that timeframe, generally because they're smaller agencies, they're waiting on their auditors to finish their audits. In particular, they are the Humane Society, ARC, the Volunteer Fire Companies, and the Volunteer Fire and EMS Association. Those together get about eleven million dollars in county appropriations, so it's about one-point-one percent of the county's budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. To clarify, the county's financial statements, which includes its component units, the school system, the Harvard Center, the libraries, and the Community College, that will be complete by October thirty-first, but this request is for those other agencies to have their audits done by December thirty-first of this year. My request also includes a request that you all exempt from audit extension services, which is part of the University of Maryland system and the Health Department, because they are part of the State Department of Health. So I would appreciate you all approving this request, and I can answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Council. Anyone with any questions? Mr. Riley.
Yeah, Crystal, again, this is the second year I've been here, and we do this, isn't there? Why don't we just change the charters for these few folks, or put something in to change the charter? Are you opposed to that, so you don't have to play this game every year?
I'm not opposed to that. Yeah, I'm not opposed to that. There would probably have to be some separation between like the county's financial statements getting done, because October is a good timeframe to get that done, and having a separate requirement for those smaller agencies.
If it gets messy, I don't want to do it, but if it's something that, you know, you sit here once a year to play this game, and it doesn't seem like it's necessary, but-
Yeah.
Maybe we'll talk off-
Ms. Ledger, you'll look into that, too?
Sure. You can do a charter amendment, a bill to do a charter amendment to change anything, but it's a process, and it wouldn't get on the ballot until twenty-twenty-six.
I understand.
So.
Thank you. Anyone else questions? All right, let's go ahead. May I have a motion to accept the extension?
Council President, I move to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty fiscal year twenty-four audit extension and exemption.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. It's moved and seconded to approve the request by Ms. Brooks. Is there any discussion again?
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the fiscal year twenty-four audit extension exemption is hereby approved. Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Seventeen, comments and input from attending citizens. Do we have anyone signed up? Ms. Dixon.
We do, Mr. President. We have two this evening.
Call your first speaker.
Bill Whalen, followed by Cassandra Beverly.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please. You look awful sharp this evening.
Podium possible? No. Bill Whalen, four fifteen Cedar Springs Road, Bel Air, Maryland, two-one-oh-one-five. Last week, I mentioned the proposed Costco at Plum Tree at nine twenty-four, and it's a good store, good reputation. It's desired by many, but at this particular location, it'll be a disaster, safety and traffic. I mentioned two questions citizens keep asking me. If not at this site, where would you recommend it be located? And if it's not a mixed-use center or a Costco, what would you like to see there? I'm going to answer those tonight. Question one, where should it be? Route one, where the Bel Air auction was located, Hartford Mall, where an empty warehouse sits? Macy's, which is possibly closing in a near term? The empty theater building and parking lot on Constant Friendship Drive? Abingdon Grill, which is not going bad, good, on Constant Friendship Drive? Five-Ten Johnny's and the adjacent surrounding land? Mountain Road, close to I ninety-five as possible? Route Ford or Carter, between Joppetown and Aberdeen? Churchville Road, close to I ninety-five as possible? Fountain Green Road, close to I ninety-five as possible? I could mention a lot more, that's just a few. Question two, what would you like to see there? Outdoor recreation complex to fit needs of youth and seniors, a multipurpose community center designed with spaces for both youth and active older adults, a health and wellness park with fitness students, or just a park with a playground? I have a friend, Mark, who actually wrote those up, and I'm going to give it to the council administrator for copies to you folks. Hartford County continues to spend millions of dollars on preserving land in the northern end and not own any of it. Why not invest some of this within the development envelope and own it in conjunction with Hartford Land Trust and others? All of this would require obviously a higher level of thinking and a commitment between county entities. I think I heard tonight, Mr. G, you probably had about a thousand acres and six and a half million that is going to come before the council. With recent changes to this AG land preservation program, one of the recommended actions was, and I quote, "Target large open space parcels within or adjacent to the development envelope for parkland acquisition and maximize the use of Maryland's program open space funding." I think it's about time we start thinking outside the box. I almost think a moratorium is needed in the development envelope. This development envelope cannot handle any more homes, apartments, retail stores, banks, restaurants, big box stores, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Fill all the empty ones before you build more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening, Cassandra Beverly. Good evening, Council President and members of the county council. My name is Cassandra Beverly and I'm here on behalf of the Hartford County Caucus of African-American Leaders. I'm here because I'm interested and I see that you've passed the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund. As you know, the African-American community was detrimentally impacted by the criminalization of marijuana. This fund is intended to try to undo some of the damage that was done in communities as a result of the criminalization of marijuana. I am a little concerned that the legislation does not follow the recommendations of the Office of Social Equity and that they recommended that a commission be formulated to look at how these funds are going to be expended. So I will be certainly looking at that. I don't, I understand that there is no, no body at present for either input by citizens, and so I am concerned about how the decisions are going to be made about how those grant, how that grant money is going to be awarded. I will be keeping an eye on that, and at some point I might be, come back and ask.
Ms. Beverly, I, I'm sorry, I missed this when you started speaking. This is an action item tonight and you should not be speaking to it tonight.
Okay.
Would like to have you back next week if you want to come speak to it.
I thought it was already voted on, though.
It is, but it's an action item this evening. Our rules and procedures don't allow us to speak to any action item the night of.
Okay, thank you. I will return in the future to discuss this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I was wondering why they were looking at me like. I missed that. Any other speakers?
There are no other speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you. Agenda number sixteen, business from council members. We'll start with Ms. Sodles this evening.
Thank you, Council President. Congratulations to the nominees of the thirty-eighth Annual Hartford's Most Beautiful People Awards. We recognize these individuals for their dedication and their contributions have had a positive impact on our community. The festival at Bel Air is raising mental health awareness with weekly walks. They will be held every Wednesday in October, and they run from seven to ten a.m. and three-thirty to six-thirty. They will be, the goal is to reach a thousand community miles. For more information, you can visit their website. And my office had the opportunity to attend the dedication ceremony for the historic Aberdeen B and O train station last Friday. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Bennett.
Hello, good evening. First, a little bit of personal history, back when I was in high school at Paris Mill, we had Students Against Walmart as a school club when that was the prop, the project coming to, to that site in the community. So there's a little bit of a connection there for me. I know very well what that area is like growing up on Paris Mill Road and how much that area has changed since my grandpa's dairy farm was there on Paris Mill Road. So I'm very familiar with what you're speaking to there. I want to congratulate all of the county employees who received their service awards last week, specifically two county employees who live on our side of the street, Ms. Sue Sapp and Ms. Dottie Smith. Ms. Sapp has served for thirty-five years in Hartford County and, and Ms. Smith has served for forty-five years. So huge, huge, huge congratulations to them for being willing to be around people like us that long. I think that's a huge commitment to our community. I also want to celebrate all those who were nominated as Hartford's Most Beautiful People. I know myself, Tony, Aaron, we were there in celebration and it was a really great event. So many people from District F, either from the Housing Authority, from the Ambulance Corps, from the fire companies, and even from the Haverdy Grace By Nothing group that my wife admins, were celebrated that night for their work to support the community. So it was a really special event. This past week, I spoke with the Caucus of African-American Leaders at their meeting. We talked about the racial achievement gap that exists here in Hartford County, and I updated them on the state literacy policy that's moving forward this month, and it was a really good conversation. We also talked about this restitution fund, community fund, and the importance of making sure that the community's taken care of with that money. I also had the opportunity to attend the Upper Chesapeake Bay Pride Festival that happened this past weekend, which was a lot of fun. I met our Ms. Marilyn, which was a really cool experience. I've never met a Ms. Marilyn before, and seven churches were there, including my home church, St. John's in Haverdy Grace, and it was just a really fun event, one of the biggest pride festivals that exist in the state of Maryland, which is a really special honor for our community. And then upcoming advisory board meetings, the Abingdon Bell Camp Perryman Advisory Board Meeting is happening Thursday, October tenth at six-thirty, Abingdon Fire Hall Company. Those are great meetings to be able to speak directly with my office, with members of the county executive's office, the sheriff's office, and have real community conversations with no three-minute limit, no stipulation on what can be shared, and I find those conversations to always be fruitful. And then for the Creswell community, on Thursday, October seventeenth at six-thirty at the Churchill Rec Center, will be their cab meeting. With that, that's everything I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to congratulate the Department of Public Works, Joe Cimac, he's been named Engineer of the Year in the state, and so it's, congratulations to him. He certainly is honored and worth it. Couple events, Hartford United Charities, Harvest is having their annual bull and shrimp roast this Friday, the eleventh, from seven to eleven at Jarrettsville Gardens. It's a great benefit, charity benefit, and it benefits Seven Fifty-Five Alliance, Choose Close Hope Women's Center, Ashley's Clubhouse, and it's a great event. I plan to be there. Also, on October the nineteenth, it's going to be our first music at, we call it Music at the Point, going to be at the park down at Flying Point Park. What we're going to try to do is have one of these events in Edgewood one year and Joppetown at the Mariner Point Park next, the following year. This is going to be on October the nineteenth, from eleven to five, and it's going to feature, we've got three different bands coming, one playing one after the other. It's free admission, food trucks will be there, there'll be plenty of seating around or you can bring your own lounge chair, and if you know where Flying Point Park, take Wool River Beach Road all the way down to Canard Avenue, and it's, it's right there on the left. Can't miss it. Also, our annual historic fall festival at, at Copley Parish in Joppetown on Ramsey Island. Every year they have that big festival and they honor back in the seventeen hundreds when actually people lived there, and there are a lot of people dressed in authentic costumes, and they have a penning view, Penning Zoo, Vendersmore, and lots of people there giving information on what happened around our county in the seventeen hundreds. So that's, that is October the nineteenth, from eleven to four p.m. at the Church of Copley Parish. Also, Copper Mines having a nice event around Halloween in Edgewood on October the twenty-sixth from three-thirty to five-thirty. They're having a free event called to, to Bull Who Halloween Event. They have music, candy, Halloween costumes, and it's called Interesting in, in Decorating Your Trunk. So you can bring people who want to come and help out, bring a trunk full of food, and everybody's going to line all their cars up and the kids are going to go by and say trick or treat, and, and they're going to give candy and all out of their trunk. So that should be interesting, that'd be the first year for that. So that's what I have. Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Mr. Penman?
I'll pass my time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Penman. Mr. Janjordano.
Thank you, Council President. I do have a few things. So first of all, the Jarrettsville Forest Hill-Norseville Advisory Board is meeting October sixteenth. Not sure exactly where that's at, but we'll get that information out to you next time. I, along with Council President Vincenti, we attended the Service Awards Breakfast. So congratulations to all the employees out there, and there's, there's somebody that's related to somebody on here that was also, that was also honored, but I'll let that person talk about it. Hartford's Most Beautiful People Award was at that one as well. My friend Manny Vendelis of Renewal Mid-Atlantic, they used to be Hartford Cleaners, they celebrated their one-hundred-year anniversary. So congratulations to them. On Friday, October fourth, we did a Eagle Scout Ceremony, we as in Council President and myself. So congratulations to Jake Rainwater. And also on Saturday, Hartford County Council President and myself was at the Hartford Land Trust Party to Preserve at the Swansberry Farm in Aberdeen. A lot of the farmers didn't even know that farm was back there from what I heard. And then yesterday, I had the great honor of doing the Capitol Dome Tour and taking the seven-hundred-and-fifty steps all the way to the, to the top of the Capitol Dome and walking outside and looking around. It was a beautiful view and it was a great day, and we got to do a tour of a lot of different areas that I didn't even know existed, and so it was pretty, pretty interesting. There's a train, we got to ride the train, and we got to go down into a secret area where the British came up through the horse stables, and that's how they burned the, the Capitol. So I want to thank Congressman Andy Harris's office for that and, and some of the great pictures. So that's all I have. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Janjordano and Mr. Riley.
Yes, congratulations to the Hitman Sports Cards and Collectible. They had a grand opening last week. Also, I had the privilege going on that tour with Congressman Andy Harris, and I want to thank Alex and Mark, it was phenomenal. The last thing, I mentioned it last week, I won't be as emotional this week, but don't forget about the Fritter Fest Fest. Pat's grandson Jake is having a fundraiser there. Please come out and support this young man, he's been through a lot. Hopkins Brewery at eleven a.m. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. So agenda item number fifteen, business from the president. I too want to congratulate all of our employees that were recognized as our award, twenty-two twenty-four award recipients at the presentation there. I want to give a special thanks to Ms. Dottie Smith and her Zoning Appeals Office for her forty-five years of service to Hartford County and its citizens. I want to recognize Ms. Sue Sapp, my legislative aide, for her thirty-five years of service to the county, and I want to congratulate my daughter for her twenty years of service to the Hartford County Department of Emergency Services. Also, I attended the Board of Education's listening session. I'm just going to go down a list of things over the last week. We had a police accountability board meeting here in the office. I met with every mayor in the municipalities in the county, along with the representatives for that district. I met with Mayor Martin and Councilman Bennett, Mayor McGrady, Councilwoman Sodles, and Mayor Edding with Councilman Janjordano, in discussions for the impact fees that are coming to get some thoughts for them. We are going to be meeting with other partners in this, people that have, will feel an impact from this as we move forward. Also, I attended the train station restoration and opening, an outstanding event. I also attended the Hartford County Public Library's Halloween wheelchair costume workshop, just a great event there, and they had an inclusive trunk or treat in the parking lot at the epicenter. And then also this Friday night is the Hartford County Sheriff's Office trunk or treat at the college. So it's a great event, I've been there before. And then just finally, before we adjourn, council, as you know, yesterday received an email from the county executive with, all due respect to him, it was littered with inaccuracies. And as you know, every piece of legislation, every concern that this council receives is handled in the most appropriate and professional manner. We do our due diligence before and fully understand the importance of every vote that we take, as well as any impact it may have on our people, their lives, and their livelihoods. My comments regarding this particular email are supported by the documents that we have in hand. Ms. Dixon, Ms. Allegia, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we've had meetings, correspondence, phone calls with Ms. Foley, the Special Assistant to County Executive, and she is also his board administrator. Related to this are documents backed up by the facts. I also received calls from a few members of his administration and others who had called on their behalf prior to any action being taken. This is why I say there's inaccuracies in his email.